So without further, without further ado, I have my gavel. Calling the meeting to order, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
Peña.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Councilmember Notori will not be present this evening. Councilmember Rovell.
Here.
Jumalo Burke.
Here.
Mayor Melham.
Here.
Next item, sunshine notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the July 6th, 2020 edition of the Star Ledger and in the July 9th edition of the Bevel Times. In effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19 pandemic, this public meeting has been changed to Zoom. That notice was published in December 10th. 2020 editions of the Bevel Times and Star Ledger, a copy of these notices has been posted on the Bevel Town Hall Bolton Board and copies on file in the municipal clerk's office.
You. Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. It might be a little awkward, but I'm going to ask everybody to rise if you can and salute the closest flag you have. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so again, this is our second Zoom meeting, so I will be repeating some things throughout the evening. The next item on our agenda is executive session. At this moment, traditionally, if we were face to face, we would be asking the audience to leave the room. Members of the council and our administration would then be deliberating. Zoom 2020, we're going to break out into a separate room. So we're going to be leaving everybody here at that time while we're in executive session. We will not be taking any action. We're going to enter a resolution to go into executive session. We'll then have a resolution to come out of executive session. Again, nothing will happen. No votes will be taken while we're in executive. Members of the council, senior administration, any directors, if you are needed in executive session, you will be invited into a room. We just need you to click on the link when you get the invite to exit this room. So please, everybody else, stay here. The meeting is still going on. We have about three items to discuss. I like to always tell everybody exactly what we'll be discussing in executive session. It is going to be the school number one redevelopment plan amendment for the planning recommendations. It's going to be the potential acquisition of Main Street and Rutgers Street, and it's also going to be township manager compensation. Those three items will be discussed in executive, no action taken. Members of the council, senior administration, you'll have a link shortly to click to exit this room and go into a private room. Everybody else, please stay seated. We might be 20, 30 minutes or so. So forgive us, but there's just no other way that we have to call the meeting in order in order to leave. Sorry about that. But we're going to be going to executive session now. First, I need a motion to, a motion to go into executive session. How about that?
I'll move.
Second.
And second, how about we do all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? None? Okay, so members of the council administration, you do have a button to enter a breakout room. I'm going to ask you to join that now. Everybody else, just stay where you are. Thank you. Okay, everybody, we are out of our executive session. We're just going to give it a few seconds for all council members to join us. Then we're just going to get a quick motion to formally end our executive session. I got to wait 30 seconds for everybody to get out of the room now. So in case you're just joining us, we were just in executive session. I'm going to give it another 20 seconds so we can make a motion to formally exit that. You are seeing some festive backgrounds. You are seeing some festive clothing. We did ask council members, the administration, anybody else joining to be a little more festive today. Why not? So we have, we are in our meeting and is everybody out? I think everybody's probably out, so I'm going to just remind everybody to please keep all their phones or audio devices on mute. I'm going to ask council members to unmute because I'm going to entertain a motion from somebody to formally leave executive sessions. Okay, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to leave.
Second motion.
Motion made in second. We're going to just do an all in favor, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So we are now back out of executive session. I'm going to ask everybody to mute their phones once again. We're moving on to item number five. Again, this is our combined conference regular meeting. We traditionally have two meetings a month. The first meeting of the month, we do a conference session because there's only one meeting this month. We made that that conference so we could discuss some different things. We have different council members and members of the administration that might be talking during this conference. I will just remind, because I do see a lot of people on and some new faces. This is a deliberation among the council, our senior administration, and some of our professionals. Unfortunately, we have, unfortunately, the audience that's here is here just to be an audience, to listen to us deliberate. You have a right to know everything that we're discussing when we are meeting as a body. So we are having a conversation basically amongst ourselves with you as the audience. If you hear something or you have a question about something, just make a note of it and you will have a chance to speak during the public commenting section and bring that up. But unfortunately, I know it's awkward. We're just going to have a conversation with all of you listening to us, and unfortunately, you can't participate just yet, but you will have a chance during public commenting. So with that being said, I have several items on. Do I see a, I do see a township manager here. So we have been talking a lot about cost-saving matters. We've been talking a lot about the current budget, but really we're already now focused on the 2021 budget. We have formed, since I've been here, it's our first budget committee that we have. It's three members of the governing body. It's myself, Councilman Deputy Mayor Graziano and Councilman Cazarelli. We have already had a meeting with the township manager, assistant manager there. I believe Judith, our CFO, was there. For those of you who are listening for the first time, several months ago, the governing body passed the resolution directing the township manager to explore certain cost-saving measures in anticipation of the 2021 budget. It's not looking good. I was on a conference call, which I'll get into later during my mayor's report with the governor this morning, and he said it right. He said, nobody's going to flip a switch and turn everything on, turn the economy on come January 1st. So our pitfalls, our shortages, our revenues that were off in 2020 are going to continue to be off in 2021, and we need to prepare for it. We could not prepare for it in 2020. It was already too late. We can prepare for it now. This governing body has done a lot. We did direct the manager to explore about eight or nine different things. And we've done a heck of a lot when it comes to reductions in salaries, not replacing people when they go, eliminating costs. We've done a lot, which I'll be getting into throughout my mayor's report and subsequent meetings to come. So with that being said, Mr. Manager, some of the recommendations that we wanted you to explore, you've talked about in our last meeting when you gave probably your manager's report, or it was a discussion, I'm not sure. But specifically now, we're moving on to some other topics. I know you showed me a list or you were exploring some stuff last time you and I spoke about it. Is there, I'm not a big fan of one-time revenues to plug budget shortfalls because you plug it one year, it's there the next year. But if we do have some properties and we can look to get some revenue from them to offset one-time expenses, I'm okay with that. So I'm not quite sure where you are with that. If you want to just kind of give us a little.
So when we talk about the status of properties that we, the town of Bevel, own that we could possibly sell for, but you know, unanticipated revenue. We did compile a list of all city-owned properties. We had an inspector go out, and I think he's just about done. In a, you know, very short period, we found two. Again, these are not big properties, but these are properties that are adjacent to homeowners that would be interested in a corner piece or a sliver, so to speak. So I spoke to Steve. Steve and I will start the process. I think there is a, well, not I think, there is a, an appraiser is going to be required on both properties. Steve may correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually might need authorization from the council to hire the appraiser. But again, on the January meeting, we should probably have the ability to sell two properties. Again, I don't think we're talking crazy amount of money, but every little bit helps, and we will continue to go through that list throughout the year.
So I think the way from going through this before, even though we do have to go out and get an appraiser and pay for an appraisal, I believe that money is then reimbursed on the backside when, when there is a sale. We don't have the ability or the luxury to just sell it to anybody we want. For the most part, we can offer it to adjoining property owners for the appraised value. They have the right to buy it directly from us. If they don't buy it, it then can go to auction. And we have, I think we auctioned off a property last year, a small, a small property somewhere in Wachung maybe, in that.
Mayor, if I could just add, they, the, if it's a undersized lot, it has to first be offered to the adjacent property owners. If it's, if the adjacent property owners do not want it, obviously that's a problem because it's an undershot lot and it's not likely going to be. And, and the appraisal takes that into account, right? If it's a full-size lot, a buildable lot, it's not offered to the adjacent property owners. It is then, we get an appraisal. We then offer it, like you said, by way of auction with the minimum, minimum bid price, the appraised value. So that's how that works.
So we're marching down that path. Again, it's not, it's not even great budget practices to use one-time ratables to fill budget shortfalls, but it's, like you've said, Mr. Manager, every little bit helps. So glad to hear we're moving forward with that. Have we gotten anywhere with shared services? I know shared services is something that we would love to explore. I know the governor has actually set up a shared service office. He's even named a czar of it, I believe, two former mayors, I think. And, you know, every municipality likes home rule. Every government likes home rule. That's why you have a, you know, everybody's got their own DPW and police department, every other court and all that stuff. And I, you know, I just know that if we can do some shared service, and that's not new to Bevel. We already have certain shared service agreements. We have a shared service agreement with, I think it's East Orange or.
Our.
Or our, our health officer, and we do some shared services here or there. So I'm not quite sure if we've been able to explore anything else since, since then, Mr. Manager.
We, we've reached out to some of our neighboring communications, just as a, for better words, an exploratory phone call. Shared services is a great opportunity for savings, but it does get somewhat complicated and it does take a little time. So we will definitely keep that on our board and certainly, you know, again, we've had two meetings with two communities just to break the ice, so to speak.
Okay. And, you know, just so the public, and I know you're just here to listen, but we also then have contractual obligations and civil service issues, and we have tenure issues, and we have all kinds of issues to deal with once we, we start exploring these things. But these are the things that I think we need to keep, keep going. The next one's the big one. So for the general public, this is something I've been big on. This is the status of our insurance cost. So just so the general public knows, roughly 76 to maybe 78% of our entire municipal budget is related to employees. Whether it's their salaries, there's their compensation, their benefits packages, their pension contributions, I mean, all that stuff. So we can cut paper clips here or there, but in the grand scheme of things, we have to reduce work, workforce and reduce salaries. And that's something that I'll say at every single council meeting, this governing body has done. There are less employees in Bevel in 2020 than there were in 19, and there were less employees in 19 than there were in 18. So this governing body is doing that, even the ones that we do hire. You've seen us vote on salary ordinances. The gross amount of time that we do that, it is a reduction in salaries and new people, if they have to come on board, start at that reduced rate. But that's still being said, insurance cost is an issue. To the general public that's listening to me right now, we just can't make a change. I'll give you an example. If this, if Bevel, the township of Bevel goes through the state insurance plan, which I would love to do, we save $2.8 million. Okay, that is, in the grand scheme of Bevel's budget, that's ginormous. I mean, that's a game changer to us. That's a game changer to our taxpayers. A $2.8 million savings is a game changer. The problem is, this governing body cannot put a resolution on and change our insurance plan. These are contractually done. We have one, two, three, at least three major unions, and I think one or two smaller ones. So police and fire are the two biggest ones, our town employees, those are the three big ones. So contractual obligations that tie our hands. With that being said, it's a game changer, and Mr. Manager already has his marching orders from the governing body that next year we start contract negotiations. So that's a huge savings for us. Other municipalities have state benefits. We would love to go there. I want to go there. $2.8 million is a huge, huge savings, a game changer for our budget and a game changer for our taxpayers. But with that being said, Mr. Manager, I know you've provided the council with some documentation. I know you've met with our insurance provider. I know that we're actually looking very good. So it's, it's a little complicated matter, but Bevel tends to be self-insured. So employee goes to the doctors, has a procedure, we basically pay for that. Big companies do that. It's not unlike Bevel to do that. But our insurance costs, which usually go up every year, as do our contractual obligations with our employee salaries, to 2 and 1/4% every year. And that's what you always hear me say. It can cost Bevel over a million dollars just to stand still every year with contractual obligations going up for employee payroll. And when insurance costs going up, it can cost us a million dollars a year just to stand still. If we don't get new revenues in to offset that, guess what? Taxes go up for everybody. So insurance is a big piece of that pie, Mr. Manager, and I know that you've done some due diligence. I know you've been with our insurance broker. I know we're, we're tied, our hands are tied right now to make the big changes, but I know you have, I'll call it good news. I know you have some good news with regard to our budget, our, our insurance costs going into 2021. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, and you definitely underestimated the importance of what the health insurance reflects to our budget. I mean, $17 million is a very big ticket item. So certainly, if we can save 2.8, obviously that would be a major feather in our cap. The town of Bevel is a self-insured insurance. We have a self-insured policy. That's the good news because if we run a very good year of experience like we did in 20, and there's a lot of reasons that the pandemic had, which kept people away from doing surgeries that maybe they would have done and things of that nature. So nothing, nothing could ever come good of a pandemic, but the fact of the matter is, our experience this year, as of October 30th, we're running about $1.2 million less of what we spent in the previous year in insurance. So that 1.2 would be a credit going into 2021. So that's good news, and that's very good news. Both Councilman Cazarelli and Deputy Mayor Graziano sat through about a four-hour meeting or three-hour meeting on Friday to really, really to show that we will roll up our sleeves and look under every rock possible. Again, timing is everything, and we do, are going into negotiations with some of the unions this year and the rest of the unions next year. And again, because there is, like you said, contractual language in the contract that restricts, restricts us from making certain insurance moves, that is a, for better words, bargaining tip. So when we do negotiate with the unions, we will be talking about health insurance, and it's just something that we have to address. So again, I thank Deputy Mayor Graziano and Councilman Cazarelli for sitting through this meeting. The renewal this year, again, is going to be at the same rate as the previous year because of that million-dollar credit that we'll have. So I don't, I haven't done the research on when was the last time our insurance didn't go up, but certainly this is going, it's just a, it's a step in the right direction, and we will continue to look at every possible other option out there.
So that's great news. Like you said, there's, there's never a good thing to come of a pandemic, but our insurance costs are down. We are self-insured, which means that we're going to be approximately budgeting a million dollars less next year. But that doesn't mean that if COVID ends in February and employees resume their normal procedures, it might, it might be a false saving, so we can't necessarily bank on that right now. But then again, we are also working with our employees with regard to good health, and I know we had some things scheduled with the team, walking to work day, and, and we're trying to work with our employees because the more education they have, the healthier our employees are, the less money we spend. And that $17 million is a huge portion of our budget. So that, that's a good dovetail unless any council member has a specific question on any of those three topics. I mean, obviously you could have always spoken already, but on properties to sell, shared service or insurance costs, this is a good segue for the manager's. Item B is really just to provide us with an update on where we are with the budget. But before the manager begins, does any council member have anything to add if you haven't done so already?
Nothing.
Okay. So it was a good segue, Mr. Manager, to go into item B, which is Township Manager Iacono to provide a current budget status of 2020. A lot of it you might have already covered, right?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to ask certainly Judith, I know she's on the call with us to unmute and certainly take some credit for the amount of work that she has been doing in the last, just in the last month alone. One of the source subjects is that our budget is always delayed to the very, very end. I could tell you, this is the first full year that we have a full-time CFO. In the last couple of years, Judith takes this process very, very serious. We have, already have had preliminary meetings. All of the departments have submitted their initial budget sheets in. We will have a, we'll, we'll probably have our first draft of the budget probably within the first week of January. Now, obviously, that's not the final budget. And again, there's a lot of things that we would have to wait for from the state to be able to adopt a budget. But I can assure you that based on the pace that we already started out on, based on the amount of work that has already been accomplished by Judith and the whole finance team, I would be, you know, again, never make a promise that I know I couldn't keep, but I would be extremely surprised that if we didn't have our budget in place by March of 2021, which would probably be, you know, maybe six months earlier than the last two or three years. So Judith, certainly feel free to jump in if you want to, but, you know, hats off to Judith. It is very important for a municipality with a 70-plus million dollar budget to have a full-time CFO, and certainly we're moving in that direction. Judith, you want to add anything?
I just want to say thank you, and I'm, I'm working on the numbers, and as Anthony did say, some things from the state will not be in, but I'd like to do a temporary budget in January to take us through the March, and hopefully we have the budget done by then. I really don't want to look into a secondary temporary budget.
And that was Judith, you remember our meeting with Councilman, Deputy Mayor Graziano was there. So just so the, just so the public knows, we're allowed to go 25% of our budget. Obviously, you can't have a budget in place January 1st, so the state knows that. The state basically allows us to take 25% of our budget, which gets us through the end of March. And then after March is when you really, your budget should be submitted, approved, in place, and that's kind of what I'm expecting. I, you know, the manager said that would be six months ahead of previous. To me, September, October is no longer acceptable. That's, that means that three-quarters of your budget's already spent. If the council doesn't like that budget, there's very little we could do about it because three-quarters of it has already been spent. So I like hearing that the, we want to be something, we want to have something in place by the end of March because I'm not interested in going to a temporary emergency budget. I'm not, because I'm just not interested in doing that. I think directors at this point probably know where the council stands. We're looking for cuts. I don't know if anybody's ever really done the mayor council budget, but I just sat down and looked at it last week and we, we cut it. And I want to lead by example. Whatever was in there last year has been cut. We're going to do more with less as we like to try and do all the time. And we're going to ask every single department to basically do the same. And departments, I have to say, Judith has worked really, really hard. The benefit to Mr. Iacono of having a full-time in-house CFO, because somebody else will say that we've had a CFO, but to have the benefit of a full, in-house, full-time CFO with Judith's credentials is a, is an asset to him, is an asset to the governing body. And I have to say, other departments have done more with less. They've been doing that since 2018. They did it in 19. They certainly did it in 2020. We've already had some meetings with individual departments, and those departments know we're looking for cuts, and those departments are, are willing to work with us. You know, they, they, they see it. They know the writing's on the wall. A lot of them live here in Bevel. So it's been, it's been a good experience to see that the directors and, and the department heads really step up and work with us with our budget. They know where we want to be come this year, and we really want, we, we just have to get there, in my opinion. So, Mr. Manager, is that, does that conclude your little summary of 2021 budget?
That is the update on the 2021 budget, and I'm sure by our first meeting in January, we could even give you even a, for better words, more detailed update.
Right. And then any recommendations that you and Judith have for this governing body? Again, I say it all the time. I give a lot of credit to this governing body. We, we saw things in 2020 that were not going the right way. And it's been a lot of departments that have pitched in, and I've used the one depart, I've used the court as, as one department, not to specifically sort them out, but mostly because of COVID, there's been a lack of revenue there. A lack of revenues because we're not, we're not issuing tickets. We're not processing people there. And this governing body saw that, and this governing body actually eliminated a second court. This governing body eliminated a second judge. This governing body eliminated an assistant prosecutor, deputy public defender, positions and salaries, people that we knew, people that we liked, people that we liked having work here in Bevel. But we saw those writing on the wall, and this governing body actually acted to remove those things. So we're ready, willing, and able to roll up our sleeves and keep doing that at the recommendation of, of the manager and, and our CFO. So again, I always like to commend the council because most councils don't do that stuff, but we did it, and they're not easy decisions to make, certainly not. So thank you all for your hard work on that. We're going to move along. So next item, Mr. Manager, you're back up. Item number six is the report of the manager.
So let me first start off by wishing everyone that's on the call a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and certainly a healthy new year. Last meeting of December, so it's been certainly a challenging year, and we look forward to a successful year in Bevel in 2021. I hope everybody on the call tonight got a robo-call, and it's a good opportunity to plug that if you did not get a robo-call, you should call Town Hall and call the manager's office, give us your name and number so we can include you in the system. The robo-call really does work. It's one of the quickest ways of us getting information out. But the, the robo-call tonight was all based about, about the winter storm warning. We have been following the tracks for the last couple of days. There were a couple of different slides. If we get real lucky, it's probably six inches. If we don't get real lucky, and it's worst-case scenario, we could be over 20 inches. And this is all in a matter of 24, 24 hours. So we have been monitoring it very closely. Obviously, we have been preparing for the last couple of days. We've had meetings down at the Public Works Garage. We had OEM meetings. Obviously, Bobby Welter, our new acting superintendent, is on the call today. All of his equipment is ready to go. The robo-call talks about some emergency streets that are, have been identified to do not park on those streets. So certainly, we want everyone to pitch in. Unfortunately, we had a holiday, Christmas spectacular scheduled for this Thursday. We're going to push that back and hopefully get it in on the 23rd. We've been working around the clock. This is something that we really want to give the children of Bevel. I could tell you that if there's a child in Bevel that believes in Santa Claus and he comes to our spectacular, he's going to walk away very exciting. And I think that's what, you know, that's what Christmas and the holidays are all about. So unfortunately, that was suspended to the 23rd. Also suspended is tomorrow is recycling. We feel that we'll be able to get the whole route complete. They're going to start a little earlier tonight. They're probably going to start about as early as 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. We feel we'll get recycling done tonight, which is good, but we are going to suspend household garbage on Thursday. We don't want garbage trucks in Bevel on Thursday morning in the height of the storm. They'll just get in the way and, you know, infringe on our plowing. So there will be no garbage pickup on Thursday. We anticipate to resume the garbage on, on Friday. So that's some, most of what the robo-call did. I know the mayor's going to talk a little bit about the COVID testing. He put a lot of time into getting our service employees tested yesterday and for the next four Mondays, so I'm going to leave that to the mayor to go into some great detail. We'll make sure that we have another news notice put out for residents that want to get tested on Mondays at Bevel. So we're working on that. COVID obviously has been a challenge, and as much as the good news is, we received last week another $460,000 in CARES Act money, and that's money to help offset some of the expenses. So in total, Bevel has received $1.2 million. Sounds like a lot of money, but the reality of it is COVID costs us a lot of money. And the $1.2 million does not make up and does not help with lost revenues. So as much as 1.2 is great news and it helps offset the costs, the, it doesn't address the short revenues, and that's why the budget is that, that important. Then the last two items that I want to talk about is that we're going to start, or we actually just resurfaced the Fairway Park to put a new basketball court. So the paving has been done at Fairway Park. In the spring, this. In the spring, this new surface is going to be color-coded with new baskets. This has been a, an eyesore, so to speak, and it's been a big, big request. Councilman Revel has been very instrumental in pushing the Fairway Park. So we've made some progress there, and we have the new surface down. The baskets are just about installed, and in the spring will be color-coded. I also wanted to bring everybody up to date is that our dog park on Division Avenue, it's almost done. Again, Belleville has been in great dire need of a dog park. This was Councilman Cazarelli's baby, so to speak. And we've looked at other locations. We've been putting a lot of energy and effort into this. The dog park is something that we get a lot of requests from the dog lovers of Belleville. And again, this is on Division Avenue, right outside of the, so to speak, right outside the tennis courts going towards the high school property. So between the dog park and our new improved Fairway Park, I think it's exciting times, and it's two, two great projects that I certainly wanted to report. So at, that's basically my report. And again, Merry, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay, so incredibly jealous of the screen sharing there and the PowerPoint. That was a, was a, all right. I'm ready to share my screen.
Nice, he's nice, man. Nice job, good job.
He snuck it in, didn't he?
Yeah, nice job.
I have to give credit where credit is due. Corinne, thank you so much for teaching me how to do it.
Anytime, you're welcome.
I'm sure there was practice and rehearse.
Many, about four times today.
Well, the one thing before, before I open it up to council members question Mr. Iacono on his report, just want to remind you, Mr. Iacono, the cancellations and stuff. Still not, you've got to update the website and social media about all that, because we're, we're less than forty-eight hours away now. Does anybody have anything specific for, we're going to do committee reports after my report. Does anybody have anything specific for the manager based upon his manager's report?
Hey, Mike, just, and I don't know whether you were going to cover it, but I know you were on the meeting this morning with, with Joe D and about the vaccines and stuff. Are you going to cover that a little bit, or?
I am, yep.
Okay, never mind, I'm good.
All right, so I'm not going to share my screen, but I am going to go to my notes. Okay, so first of all, yes, as the manager mentioned, this is basically the last meeting of the year. So Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year. We're hoping that 2021 is a lot better than 2020 and almost can't get any worse. But we are hoping for, for good things in 2021. As Councilman Revel mentioned, every single Tuesday since COVID began, I sit on an Essex County Mayor's Call this, this morning. We had a special guest. We had the governor join us. He was on the phone with us about thirty minutes, which was a great opportunity for us mayors to get, ask some questions. Those of you who do know COVID is rising in New Jersey. Those of you should know by now that Essex County is leading the way. And really Belleville, Newark, and, and some, some other more of the urban areas, whether it's Irvington or East Orange, are also leading the way when it comes to just Essex County. With that being said, the governor decided that the vaccine was going to come to Essex County first. The county has set up multiple, multiple locations for vaccinations. But before I do that, I just want to reiterate the fact that the county is still COVID testing. So they're, they're testing six times a week. Might be disrupted a little bit now because of the storm. But you can go to EssexCOVID.org and find out where the county's testing. Any Belleville resident can do that. However, now the township, and Mr. Iacono has been working hard on this, the township of Belleville is going to be doing our own COVID testing every single Monday for the next four Mondays. This past Monday, we tested one hundred and eighty Belleville residents. And as the manager said, we actually opened it up. The, the first Monday, which was yesterday, we opened it up to Belleville residents and anybody in Belleville's service industry. So if you work at a bar, you work at a restaurant, if you work at a Belleville-based service business, and you come in contact with Belleville residents, well, we want you to be tested as well. So we serviced one hundred and eighty people there yesterday. We're going to be giving some more specific instructions and trying to make it a little easier for Belleville residents to register for that. But that will be Belleville's own testing. It'll be every Monday for the next four weeks. We'll be pushing some information out on social media and the website in the next day or so to help you register for that. Back to the vaccines. The vaccine is here in Essex County. The governor decided to bring it here first. Our testing location is going to be Livingston. And I just want to hit the pause button on that. We made an appeal today to the county to potentially change our location to Newark. Initially, it was thought that Belleville residents would prefer to go to Livingston, because we didn't necessarily know where the testing location was going to be in Newark. But it turns out it's right here on our border in Branch Brook Park by the, what we call the Four Diamonds, or the Bocce Bowl Courts, or the senior center that's there. So it's literally right here on our border. We made an appeal today to the county to get Belleville's testing location moved to Newark, which again, would be right here in Branchwood Park. So we're optimistic they're going to, they're going to agree with us that we should be moved there. But as of now, we are testing in Livingston. Mr. Manager, the one thing that I had for you was if you can work with our health department, with our dialer ride, with our senior services, and, and all of those good services that we provide our seniors. I know we only transport seniors and those who need transportation, usually within Belleville. We recently expanded that to Clifton and Nutley, I believe. But I think we need to make an exception. I'm sure the council would agree.
Are you in Belleville?
Hello?
I'm, I'm, I'm good.
We hear you there, Mr. Iacono.
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, I was writing notes as you were talking, I'm good.
Okay, so we, we are going to be asking you to, to maybe work on a plan that we can transport our seniors or anybody who really needs assistance with a vaccination. Right now, it's going to be to Livingston, but hopefully, we're optimistic it's going to be Newark. And, and we would love, I'm sure the council would agree, we would love to see a program to transport our residents, and not just our seniors, but our residents there. So with that being said, some other topics that I have, I'm still getting complaints from seniors who are mailing in tax and water payments that are getting to us six weeks late. They're accruing interest. We need to figure out that if it's postmarked before the date it was due, even if it comes three or four weeks late because of our terrible mail service here in Belleville, that we need to make some kind of an accommodation for them. So I would like to, to definitely look into that. Next topic I was going to mention was a budget summary, but I think Mr. Iacono already did that. That being said, the one thing I have not seen on the agenda or discussed much is that last meeting, I mentioned that the library had a hundred thousand dollar surplus. And I'm not, we're not quite sure the mechanism to get that back to the township. I did see some emails a couple of weeks ago on that, Mr. Manager. But I think a hundred thousand dollars would be valuable to the township. There is a library board meeting scheduled for Wednesday. It would be our last meeting. So we need to take action as a board in 2020. That would be our last chance. One saving grace is that that meeting might get canceled because of the storm. But we do need some kind of answers from the township on the process to, for the township to receive that hundred thousand dollars. So is that something that you could look into once again?
Absolutely. And we'll, I'll have a, I'll have an update between Joe Ficcone and Judith tomorrow.
Yeah, only because we may very well have our last meeting on Wednesday if it's not canceled. So we definitely need some answers on that.
Absolutely.
Upcoming events, manager mentioned that the holiday drive-through, I know he spent a lot of time working on that, in conjunction with the school district, by the way. A lot of time on both sides being put into that. That has been postponed. Information on that postponement will be on our website and social media, I'm assuming tomorrow. Little further down the road, about a month out, January twenty-first, we are actually doing a blood drive. Information for that blood drive is already located on our website. Manager mentioned alternate side of the street parking has been suspended until spring of 2021. And the last one or two quick things, we are still doing a decorating contest. You can nominate yourself, your friends, your neighbors, basically anyone in Belleville. Go to the Belleville website. It's on our website. You have to tag a specific hashtag on your social media, and that's also being promoted on our social media account. So please take part in that. We do have a prize there. It's a good thing. It's a, we all need to stay, a little extra help to stay in the holiday spirit, I think. Manager mentioned something about children writing Santa. We do have multiple, multiple mailboxes to Santa. The deadline for that is the eighteenth, or else we can't get the letters to Santa, and Santa can't get a reply back to you. So if you have a child, there's one here at Town Hall, there's one at the Belleville Public Library. There's also one on, at the Silver Lake Firehouse. Just make sure that you do include a return address. Before we send them off to Santa, I've had the opportunity to look at some of the letters. We do have letters that don't have return addresses. If you want, Santa knows a lot, and Santa's very smart. But Santa might not be able to figure out your return address. So if you're going to assist the child in writing a letter, please, please make sure that there is a return address. My last comment is there's about two or three different toy drives going on. No, Councilman Cazarelli does his own. I believe our PBA does one. I believe maybe even our Women's Club does one. There's a couple of them out there. I'm going to be working on a social media post tomorrow with all the different links. There's about three of them out there. Please do your part if you can and support any of the local drives that are actually going on. That ends my report of the mayor. We do have some committee reports at this point. I'm not sure if we have anything. Our committees are all ad hoc, for the most part, with the exception of a newly formed and organized budget committee. I think that that's already been provided for today. But does any council member have anything specific to mention or discuss of something that they've been involved in?
Yeah, Mayor, just to go over a couple of quick things here. Our manager mentioned a couple of things going on with the parks in town. So as far as the green team goes, we do have some stuff going on at the dog park. We do have the basketball hoops going in actually today at a Fairway Park. The hoops were installed, and the, I think the top soil was delivered too for our community planners. So that's going to be a cool project coming up. If the weather holds out, we'll be able to put them in this year. If not, we'll be doing them in early spring. So that's what's going on with the green team. We're going to have a lot of stuff planned for spring, a big Earth Day event this year, since we kind of missed out last year. So we'll be planning that soon, and that's all I got for the green teams, thank you.
Yeah, but you did, you did a lot of planting up at Camp Carragher too, Ben. I mean, right?
Yeah, I think we hit that already at the last council meeting.
I like to hit it again.
Hit it again.
Hit it again, man.
Yeah, but Vinnie didn't have any pictures.
Oh, no pictures, nice.
No slides, Vinnie, huh?
Come on, Ben.
Maybe Councilman, maybe Deputy Mayor Graziano's got a slideshow for us.
Nothing like a PowerPoint. When, when the technology is done, you will get that.
All right, we actually can do it now in the new council chambers, once we ever get back in there. Okay, anybody, any other council member have anything to add?
Nothing at this moment, Mayor.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes.
No minutes at this time, Mayor.
All righty, we're going to move on to communications.
A letter received from the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation stating the township has been selected to receive funding from the DOT fiscal year 2021 Municipal Aid Program for various streets for the Belleville Roadway Improvements Project in the amount of $571,360.
Sounds good to me. Next item on the agenda is our ordinances. This is ordinances for introduction. Orders number one.
An ordinance amending chapter nine of the codified ordinances of the township of Belleville.
Make a motion open for introduction.
Introduce.
Introduce.
We have a second. All in favor? Any nays? Nope, okay. Introduced. Orders number two.
An ordinance creating part-time positions and adopting compensation plans.
Making ordinance introduce, Mayor.
Make a motion introduce, sure.
Yeah, motion, whatever we're doing. I wanted Vinnie to feel better. I wanted Vinnie to feel better bound, so, thank you.
All right, we have a motion introduced, and I heard a second from Councilwoman DePena, so all in favor?
Hi.
Both are now introduced, okay. Section B, which is the ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, chapter eight dash six A, four-way stop intersections designated.
Motion open for public hearing?
Second it.
We have a motion made and second to open for public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays. We are open for public introduction, I'm sorry, for public hearing on this. First, I'm going to shoot over to the clerk and ask her if we have any written comments.
Not for ordinance number one, Mayor.
Okay, so we have no written question, comments.
Open for public hearing.
One, so at this point, I'm gonna, and it's a little difficult, so just bear with me here on Zoom. I have two screens that I'm looking at. So I'm going to ask if anybody in the public has anything to, question or comment specifically about this ordinance. Now would be your time to speak. I see a hand here, Ms., so I'm just going to go by, by whose hands I see first in this modern world. So I see Ms. Fleischman. I'm going to ask all speakers, unmute your phone and state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to this particular ordinance.
Okay, hi, Mayor, hi, Councilor, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hopefully, like you said, better 2021. Where would this four-way stop be?
So just, just before we go, I just need your, your address for the record.
Oh, sorry, eight thirty-three Main Street, Unit F in Belleville.
Got it, I'm looking at the ordinance now. This is Cedar Hill Avenue and Mayor Street. It's an all-four-stop sign at that intersection.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And these, these recommendations come strictly from, just so the general public knows, we don't drive, this stuff out. This is usually a recommendation from our traffic division. Does anybody have a question on this specific ordinance? Just give me a second to scroll through two pages. I don't, if you're not on video, I'm going to need you to speak. If not, I'm looking for hands. I don't see anybody else. So can I have a motion to close and move for final adoption?
Motion to close and move for final adoption?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Natori. I'm sorry, Revel.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved.
Orders number two for second and final reading.
An ordinance to amend the revised general ordinances of the township of Belleville, chapter eight dash sixteen handicap parking spaces.
Motion open for public?
Second it.
We have a motion made and seconded to open for public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please, so again, the same deal, this, your comments would be specific to this particular ordinance. Looking for hands from anybody that's on video. If you're not on video, I just need you to initiate some communication. Seeing none? Still seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion to close and move for final adoption?
Second it.
We have a motion made and seconded, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Revel.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved.
Ordinance number three.
An ordinance amending chapter ten of the codified ordinances of the township of Belleville.
Motion open for public hearing?
Second it.
We have a motion made and seconded to open for public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I hear no nays, so I'm assuming we're going to be open for public. So again, I'm looking for, actually, Madam Clerk, did we have any, anybody email on this particular?
Yes, I have one question from Mario Drawz, ninety-five Bell Street.
And excuse me one second, Miss, Madam Clerk, did I fail to ask you that for the second, second ordinance? Did we have, I don't think we had anything.
No, we did not.
Sorry about that. So now we're back to ordinance number three for second and final. Will we go to?
And I have a question from Mario Drawz, ninety-five Bell Street.
That's somebody not on mute. We just need everybody on mute.
Okay.
Kelly, you're muted.
Kelly, hold on, we, we had to auto-mute everybody, and that got you. Just start over, please.
Okay, I have a question from Mario Drawz, ninety-five Bell Street. He says, ordinance number three, explain. The title does not tell me anything.
So this is ordinance number three, is the water, is the water rate that we've been talking about now. Seems to be several different meetings. I see Mr. Martino is on the phone at the precise moment we very well may need him. So, okay, he's ordering a pizza, I think.
Not ordering a pizza, sorry.
So, virtual pizza. This is the, this is the water rate increase that we've been dealing with for several This is the, uh, this is the water rate increase that we've been dealing with for several meetings now. Uh, initially, there was a substantial increase uh in everything in the uh minimum uh usage and then the uh five hundred cubic cubic feet of water charge, uh, the access charge, uh, as I should say. Um, there was a substantial increase. Uh, after we passed that on second reading, uh, we sat with our finance team. We were suspicious that maybe we didn't have all the data that we, we, we could have had at our disposal. Uh, once we recalculated that data, we did see uh some opportunities there to reduce the rates. Uh, we did do something that's um much like every single utility out there, uh, whether you get electric or gas from PSC and G, there's a slightly different rate for residential and commercial. Uh, we kind of went around that same exact route as well. Uh, so what we have now is a rate for uh non-commercial uh, or not non-business. Non-business and business. Um, so where that huge increase was a couple of meetings ago, that was started in August and then voted on, I guess, in uh October, maybe. Uh, we are now in second reading to reduce that rate. Uh, it is still an increase from the original rate, uh, that had not been changed since two thousand five, uh, fifteen. Uh, as you've heard me speak every single meeting so far, uh, NORC charges us more money every single year. Uh, and we had not been keeping up with that increase. Uh, so we've been flat for about five years and that caused the deficit. That not only caused the deficit that had to be repaid by the tune of, I think that one was one point six million. Uh, we then have a running deficit that has to be made up because of increased rates to that utility. So, uh, Mr. Martino, if you wouldn't mind, because I have my notes in my computer, if you wouldn't mind just going over the, the rates, I know you were very, very involved, or Judith, whoever. I know Steve, you were very involved with me and, and you could explain it.
And I dra- I drafted the ordinance, um, yes, the rates, uh, and this will address probably other people's questions as well. Uh, the rates previously that were passed back in August um, were uh an increase that the, the minimum rate for the first five hundred cubic feet of water is going to be, is the same as it was back in August. It's fifty-five dollars a quarter. Um, and uh it increases to, for the non, for the business, uh, to thirty dollars a month. Um, that is the same as it was in the previous new water ordinance, which was back in August. Uh, with respect to uh the one hundred cubic feet, anything above five hundred cubic feet for every hundred uh cubic feet above five hundred cubic feet. Uh, in the non-business, it goes, uh, it was seven dollars in the new per hundred. In the new, in the ordinance back in August, uh, it's being reduced to five dollars uh, per one hundred cubic feet above five hundred cubic feet of usage, uh, in the quarter. Uh, in, uh, with respect to the business rate, uh, it had been increased to eleven dollars. I believe it was an eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, not exactly sure, but that was in August. That's being reduced to nine dollars and seventy-five cents per hundred cubic feet above five hundred cubic feet per month. So those are the new rates.
So we, as I said, uh, obviously the rate has increased since the two thousand and fifteen. Um, but we did reduce the rates from the previous ordinance that this council adopted just a few meetings ago. Uh, that triggered a lot of uh outcry, which was justifiable because bills went out that were really, really high. Uh, we have since been able to reduce that uh back down now. It's still an overall increase, we don't hide behind that. Uh, we, we run a deficit there and we're trying to make that up. Uh, but it is now, uh, we've sharpened our pencils, we've gotten our hands around the correct data. Uh, and what you see being voted on tonight is a decrease from what we had recently just approved. Uh, am I correct in saying that, Mr. Martino?
That is correct.
So, uh, and I know Mr. Martino said it, so it, 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 it uh, he talks sometimes by hundred cubic feet. I don't want anybody to get confused with the thousand cubic feet that we often talk about. Uh, so the residential was seventy dollars, uh, he used the number of seven because he said for a hundred cubic feet. Um, we sometimes uh are more accustomed to going by a thousand cubic feet. So it's basically going from seventy dollars for a thousand cubic feet um, down to fifty dollars uh for a thousand cubic feet for the, what we consider residential, which is non-commercial. Uh, and also the commercial was also reduced uh from the bills that went out. So that answers the one question that we had uh about this ordinance uh that was written in. Do we have anybody else that wrote in about this ordinance?
No, I do not, Mayor.
Okay. So with that being said, we've now uh handled the first question, which I think between my summary and Mr. Martino's summary may very well answer some other questions that the residents have. Uh, but I do see a hand up here in front of me, Mr. Mafucci. Uh, Vic, just going to ask you, uh, name and address for the record and, uh,
Mafucci, sixty-one Continental Avenue. Uh, on the original rate increase, there was the cubic foot rates, but then there were like additional surcharges or whatever. Do they still exist?
So it's not a surcharge, there's a, there's a minimum fee. Uh, and again, this is, I, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, our rates are, are pretty comparable now to surrounding communities. Uh, so every, uh, most communities, including Bellevue now, we have the minimum fee. It used to be twenty-four dollars, uh, that went to
Fifty-five.
Went to where?
Fifty-five.
Uh, that is now, let me just make sure, Steve, is that?
Uh, Mayor, I, I think, uh, have I addressed Mr. Mafucci's question for a second? Because
Sure.
There is a difference in the ordinance that I think Mr. Mafucci picked up. Uh, in the original ordinance that we had an increase, we had separated out um, a percentage for the NORC payment and a percentage for uh our, the regular water payment. Uh, because of the way uh we reviewed this and, and, and Judith went through it with, with uh the township engineer, that didn't make sense because uh the accounting of it doesn't make sense. So instead of, since we knew more about the payment for NORC in drafting this ordinance, uh, it was easier to just put that in as an expense to add to the water utility and then uh do it as one rate. Um, so there is, Mr. Mafucci, in answer to your question, there is no additional surcharges. What is in the ordinance, uh, has not been separated. Uh, the rates I gave earlier in, in response to Mr. Drawz's question, um, included that. So it's just one rate, uh, as I said, five dollars per hundred square, a hundred cubic feet over, over five hundred and the nine seventy-five for the not, for the business rate above five hundred cubic feet.
But the, the, the water bill does have two different fees in it. It's, it's the minimum fee and the access if you use more than five hundred cubic.
Access usage, correct.
Yes. Now, uh, Mr. Martino just answered what I was saying, so that answer is excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm looking for hands. I don't see hands here. So the people that are on video with me, I'm looking for hands, I don't see any. So if you're not on video and you're just on telephone or audio, I'll ask you to unmute your, your phone uh, to be recognized if you have a question on this particular ordinance. I just want to confirm that they have the right to, they have the ability to unmute, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
You're good.
Yeah, so I, we're good on this ordinance, it looks like. I think Mr. Martino's answer was excellent. And uh, I'm going to entertain a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Make a motion to close and move for final adoption.
Second.
Motion made and second, uh, clerk call the roll.
You're muted.
You're muted, Kelly.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori, I'm sorry, Rovell.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved.
Well, that is ordinance number four. Ordinance number four is now complete, I'm going to have a motion to enter public comment.
No, that was ordinance number three.
That was three.
We need four. Four.
I apologize, ordinance.
Ready?
Yeah, go.
Oh. Codifying a special emergency appropriation in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the water utility or such other amounts certified by the Director of Local Government Services for the purposes set forth in NJSA forty-eight, four dash fifty-three L and/or NJSA forty-eight, colon, four dash fifty-three M and in by the township of Bellevue in the county of Essex, New Jersey.
Motion open for public.
We have a motion made, open, and I heard a second, motion made and second to open for public, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no nays, we're going to open up for, so, uh, before we do that, to anybody that I'm looking at or listening to, do we have any specific questions, Madam Clerk, that were emailed in for this particular ordinance?
Yes, the first question I have for ordinance number four is from Vincent Franc Antoni, one twenty-nine Mount Prospect Avenue. He states, is this five hundred thousand dollars a bond or a transfer from another account? Why do we need this? The twenty twenty municipal budget anticipated four point four million in water billings, the same amount received in two thousand and nineteen. Another nine hundred and sixty thousand was transferred to the water, water account from the water budget surplus as per your CFO at the budget hearing. Also, the third quarter water bills contained two hundred percent to three hundred percent increases. How much extra revenue was received as a result of these increases?
So I'm going to, uh, I'm going to hand this off to Judith, I think, for a detailed explanation, but uh, I just want to add one thing, it's, it's something that we really have not talked about. Uh, we've had water conversations now for the last couple of council meetings. Uh, and I don't think the general public knows, uh, that even though in Bellevue, as is most municipalities, the, uh, your pipe going to your house is your responsibility. Um, just like the infrastructure of Middle Street is ours, the pipe going to your house is your responsibility. That's, it's not uncommon to Bellevue, most municipalities are that way. Well, what we haven't discussed, and this council, uh, hasn't really, uh, ed- done a great job in, including myself, of educating residents, is the fact that the federal government uh, stepped in and mandated us, that we are under a federal, uh, I don't know if the legal term is an order, but we're under a federal, we are, okay, we're under a federal order, uh, mandating that we change out approximately three hundred and change to four hundred residential lead service lines. Although not our responsibilities, uh, not in Bellevue, but the federal government has mandated and given us an order to do that uh, at the tune of approximately eight thousand dollars per. Uh, if you're doing four hundred lines at eight thousand dollars, do math, it's three point two million dollars. That just because the federal government woke up, called Bellevue on the phone and said, you guys got to change out four hundred lines that aren't really your responsibility. Uh, that has been an order entered in, uh, we're obligated to, to have to uh, uh, abide by that order and therefore we have to go out and spend three point two million dollars to do that. Uh, I believe Judith, and might correct, that's what this is for? You're, you're muted.
Muted.
You're still muted.
There we go, okay. Um, actually, that's actually something else. The, the reason for this five hundred thousand dollars is because of COVID. The state actually, um, gave townships the opportunity to take advantage. We had to file an out pitch by December first because we may or may not collect the water revenues. The reason being that Governor Murphy issued Executive Order one ninety, which does not allow us to charge any interest or penalties on the delinquent water rates. And on top of that, you cannot have a water tax sale. So most towns are probably going to fall short with their water revenues. If we do, this allows us over the next five years to make that up instead of making up in all one year. So it's really kind of like a protection mechanism to help townships because of COVID nineteen. And that's why we may or may not need it, but we had to put it in place in case we didn't. The deadline was December first, and that's why we adopted it. By the end of the year, we'll know whether or not we need to use it.
So then, but I, I know I'm not hallucinating, we, 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 we did bond about five hundred thousand to begin the lead line replacements, correct?
Right, but that's not a part of your regular budget, that's a part of your bonding budget, not your current budget.
I knew I wasn't dreaming it, okay.
And then as far as the other answers, I can also answer them if Mr. Fentoni would like me to address them, I can address them also.
If you can quickly, sure.
Okay, uh, the nine sixty was not a transfer, okay? That was an increase in revenues, okay, due to the water rates, which we were required to do in order just to come up with the rates to carry the water utility to the end of twenty twenty. And then after we, after you revisited the rates, we came up with a, with a decreased rate because we realized that the rate would maybe be too high in the future, but that rate was necessitated in order to get us through twenty twenty. And therefore we did that, and now we're able to lower the rates going through twenty twenty-one.
Perfect. Thank you. So was there any other question, Kelly, uh, Madam Clerk, on the written, uh, questions for this particular ordinance?
Yes, I have one more from Mario Drawz, ninety-five Bell Street, and he just said ordinance number four, explain.
All right, I think we kind of, between my explanation of what it wasn't, uh, but a good summary because we haven't really discussed it, and I think what Judith kind of explained, I'm almost positive that we've, uh, Judith already explained that one. Uh, so any, uh, I'm looking at the video now, anybody else that's on video, just show me your hand if you have a question particularly about this ordinance. I see, uh, Ms. Fleischman, uh, so just unmute yourself, Ms. Fleischman, and, uh, again, uh, name and address for the record, sorry.
Oh, there we go, okay. Carmela Fleischman, thirty-three Main Street, Bellevue. Um, since this ordinance is coming from the federal government, are they offering any sort of, no laughing at this, reimbursement? Or grant that the town can apply for?
So I, I apologize, I was corrected by Judith, uh, two different things. So my answer, uh, while I started my answer out saying that we haven't done a good job of telling people about it, that served as me telling you about it, but that five hundred thousand, uh, initial bond that I was talking about is not this.
Right, no, I, no, I, I understand that.
Can I answer her question?
Yeah, to answer your question, if it's about the lead line replacement, no. Uh, but Ju- Judith, uh, says that this, this ordinance is about something else and we might not
Got you.
It's just I need it, but it's not a federal program, it's a state program. And, um, to get back to the lead line, okay? We, I actually had to, I had to do a projection for the next about twenty years down the road, okay? For this lead line, that's incorporated in every single budget going forward, and I did the first five years going forward.
So, yeah, thank you for that, and I, I got to keep it to this particular order, even though it was my, it was my fault.
No, no, that's fine.
Uh, okay, so you're good?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, uh, so I'm looking now at videos. I'm looking at people, I'm looking for hands. I don't see any hands going up of people that are on video. We already dealt with people that submitted questions via writing and email. So if you're on this call and you have a specific question about this particular ordinance, um, and you're not on video, just kindly unmute yourself and, uh, be acknowledged.
What are you doing?
Anthony, you're not muted, Anthony, there we go. Um, okay, so I don't see, I haven't heard, I don't think, yeah, I haven't heard anybody else. So with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to close.
Motion to close and move for final adoption.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depeña.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Jumalo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
The ordinance is approved.
Okay, now, I was jumping the gun before, now we're on item number twelve, I think that is. It is now public commenting, so it's a little different here on Zoom. Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna first entertain a motion to open public comment, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion open public comment. Second it.
All right, I got a motion made, I got a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're no nays, that's good. Uh, so first, I'm going to just, uh, keep it consistent, I'm going to ask the clerk if she has any public comments. Uh, and again, uh, again, this could be about anything, you do have five minutes, uh, for your comments. Um, this could be about anything, so we're going to go to anybody that would have emailed in any kind of comments. Uh, do we have anybody, uh, can you take them in a certain order?
Yes, the first one I received is from Vincent Franc Antoni, one twenty-nine Mount Prospect Avenue. He states, resolutions thirteen through twenty-one awarding contracts for legal work to a slew of lawyers. Why and for what cases? Doesn't a township Doesn't a township attorney have the qualifications to handle some of these issues such as notices, resolutions, ordinances, et cetera? Why no dollar amount or limit on these contracts? Two, resolution number 27, what line items are being transferred, dollar amounts, please? Three, why are we acquiring the lot on Main Street and Rutgers Street? Is this the lot on the northwest corner? I believe this lot is contaminated. A warehouse was approved for this lot by the zoning board a while ago. What happened to that? Four, I see Mr. Iacono is to provide current status of 2021 municipal budget. Glad to see he is starting early. While we get our tax bills on time next year, will we get our tax bills on time next year? Or will we wait until October or November again? And five, the BOE is holding in-person meetings. Please follow suit and allow us to attend our council meetings in person. And he says Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Frantantoni. So BOE meetings, they are going to resume. They much, they have a much larger room. I, for one, like in-person meetings. I think they're much easier. Most municipalities are still doing Zoom, though. We just have to notice for the next year's meetings. We chose not to notice all 12 months for Zoom. We chose to notice just the first, I think, two or three months for Zoom meetings. If we get an opinion from our town attorney that we can go back to the high school, or preferably be back here in the council chambers, I would much rather do that. In, if and when we get that ability to do so, we can easily just change that next meeting's notice and renotice it for an in-person meeting, something that I would much rather do. Tax bills, as you heard during our discussion during caucus section and during the manager's report, he is anticipating getting the tax bills out on time. I expect that this year. I think it's going to happen. Lot on Main Street, you used the word acquiring. We're not acquiring the lot. We went into executive session to discuss that piece of property in conjunction with a planning board recommendation for the school number one property. We don't want, put anything there. We don't want anybody to put anything there. We would much rather have the developer purchase that lot to open it up for track, for, for traffic flow, to increase traffic flow, be able to make a left-hand turn over the bridge. And if for some reason there is a private party interested, the township is open to the concept of, of acquiring that just so we can then sell it or hand it over for the value to the developer. We're not interested in keeping that property at all. Ordinance, resolution number 27, Judith, can you just quickly hit what those transfers are for? While you're, you're on mute. Still on mute.
Does he want individual or just like total amounts?
So 27, yeah, if you could just quickly go through the amounts and where it's heading to. I mean, I read it, but.
Okay, all righty. We had a transfer, $10,000 from the manager's office, SNW. And we broke that up between purchasing department, SNW, and the clerk's office, SNW, because we do have a QPA that's coming out of purchasing. And then I believe we, we're going to transfer some personnel into the clerk's office, I believe. Then the mayor's office, we're transferring $2,700 out of that to the clerk's office to also cover the transfer. Then just amongst DPW, they had a little extra money in certain areas, so I transferred 58,000 into different categories to cover SNW. Because we were able to actually allocate some of that money to CAS. We're getting reimbursed on that. Same thing applies for vehicle maintenance. Mayor and council, Owen E., needed a, needed $10,000. So I transferred some money from that also. Township attorney, I took 25,000 out to cover some sanitation because we had, we had an increase in, in some garbage removal.
Okay, and lastly, I know there was a comment about resolutions 13 through 21. Mr. Frantantoni knows this. He's been around local government for a long time. Every single year, every governing body goes out, issues RFPs or RFQs. We qualify certain professionals. We then pass a resolution, which gives us the ability to hire them when we need them. There's a, he asked a question, why there's no dollar amounts, because it's not costing us anything right now. Why there, and it's not a slew of attorneys. It's the same, basically the same attorneys that we use every year. It's redevelopment council. I believe it's probably labor council is in there. Again, the redevelopment council, when they do build a township, that usually comes out of escrows that developers pay, so it doesn't even cost us anything for that. And the other ones, we're not hiring them per se because there is no contract with them. There's no dollar amount. We're basically qualifying them so that we have the ability to use them in the next 12 months. Why doesn't the town attorney do everything? It's because it's, these are specialized things. Labor negotiations are specialized things. Redevelopment council, specialized things are, I will say that our, our law budget is way down, mostly because we have qualified attorneys now doing what they do. For a long time, our legal budget was, was out of whack, whether it was lawsuits and litigation, everything else that we used to pay out, that we have not paid out now for three years, probably because we're making decisions to go with specialized attorneys when we need them. Again, the redevelopment council is probably the most important one there, and they are paid mostly out of escrows. So not paid by taxpayer money, paid by developers that make applications. Everybody else not being hired, being basically brought in, retained. We have the ability to go to them if and when need be, and if they do get a contract, that's in public and done before the governing body and before the public can see it and know it and all that great stuff. So that's why it's not a slew of attorneys. There are no dollar amounts for a specific reason. We're not spending any money for them, and this happens every single year. As a matter of fact, I think I remember that exact question from Mr. Frantantoni last year about why we were hiring so many attorneys. And it wasn't true last year. It's still not true this year. Anybody else? Written email comments, Madam Clerk? You're muted, Cal.
I'm sorry. Next one is from Mario Drawz, 95 Bell Street. He states, again and again, I have asked for the past two years for the entire agenda to be viewed on the law, viewed online prior to a public meeting. I was told that it will be on a site called iCompass. I do not see it. How do I get on that site? Again, no transparency. Article from Sunday Star Ledger said Governor Phil Murphy predicted COVID-19 pandemic would plunge the state into economic peril. New Jersey could lose 20 billion in revenue, maybe even 30 billion. The state has the potential to run out of cash. 200,000 workers might be laid off. And in absence of second federal stimulus, stimulus package, funding for public schools may be slashed by $1 billion. This is a reason for all of us to be concerned. Last meeting, I brought up the pilot programs that Jersey City gave out. Again, this year, they are short $30 million for their schools. In the long run, our schools will be shortchanged and be forced to raise taxes because of this. Last year, Jersey City was 120 million short for their schools. Long-term breaks recalls financial harm to the taxpayers and to our schools. Where will the money come from? People on fixed income and hardworking people that have to work two jobs just to pay for your reckless spending. Last meeting, you said the town is taking 1,000, 100,000 from the library and transferring to town budget. Looking at my tax bill, that portion went up. Where is the savings if you already raised that portion of my tax bill? Is it true the library director just got another salary increase the fifth in three years? I asked last meeting about your chauffeur service by the police department. Your answer was a poor excuse. Did you on a number of occasions in the past have a female passenger accompany you? Resolution number seven, it is nice to see your neighbor get a position that was not advertised. What will the salary now be? Who paid for the courses she had to take? Where was this position advertised? Why was this position not opened to all employees? Resolutions 13 through 21, same question to all. Why do you have to hire all these law firms? How many proposals did the town receive and where was this advertised and when? What is the dollar amount of each contract per hour and cap? Who came up with this recommendation? In the past three years, has anyone on the governing body received any campaign contribution or legal service from any of these firms? Simple yes or no from all? You really want us to believe we need all these outside services? We have a qualified manager and a town attorney to do this work already. This reckless spending spree must stop. I think you should step down as mayor and let another council member take your position, maybe even a recall. The taxpayers of Belleville cannot afford your tax hikes any longer.
Lot, there's a lot there to, a lot to unpack. I'll probably start at the bottom. Reckless spending is, that's just, I mean, a joke. If you paid attention to this particular meeting, any meeting this year, you'll know that everything this council has done, everything this administration has done to cut costs, reduce costs. That's just, it's an opinion that, for some reason, is traditionally on the wrong side of reality. The proposals for hiring attorneys, 13 through 21, again, Mr. Dros, you were here on the governing body. You understand exactly what it's all about. As does Mr. Frantantoni. Same answer I gave to Mr. Frantantoni is your answer. We are not hiring them. We are qualifying them so that we can use them if and when we need them. The reason why we go to specialized people is to avoid mistakes, avoid costly litigation, and avoid being sued and losing. The reason we have labor councils, because they advise us on employee discipline to avoid lawsuits that have cost the township millions of dollars, which you never seem to talk about, interestingly. But we haven't lost any of those lawsuits in the last three years since I've been here and maybe two or three years prior to that. So I think the township is doing right by hiring the right legal counsel. Neighbor, I'm not sure what neighbor you, you speak of. I'm not, I'm unaware of a neighbor of mine that, that did get a job in town hall. So I'm not really quite sure what that's about. You asked a question about me being driven at the last council meeting. I gave you a, a straight, honest answer and said yes, and said that not just myself, but members of the council have, prior and past, every single mayor that I'm aware of has access to transportation if need be for official business. Nothing new there, but I guess because I answered you honestly, you called that a poor answer. But that's just part of the job. That's absolutely what I do. If I go down to Trenton, I'm going down to Trenton sometimes with somebody else that can drive, can park, has access to, if it's a parade, if it's somewhere I can't get in my regular car, it's a lot easier to go with somebody there. At times, as you know, there's been one, a one position in three years that this governing body has created that actually assists the mayor and council. Prior to that, you have seven people that are not here necessarily 40 hours, but probably put 60 hours a week in on our own. We now have one person that actually works for the mayor and council. That's one person at, starting at the lowest possible salary anybody could do. And at times, myself and other members of the council do travel or do have that person with us when we're at public events or official events, for that matter. Library, again, you're uninformed, Mr. Dros. This, I've heard this now twice, that the, I have magically raised the library budget. Mr. Dros, you know that the library budget is statutory. It's a math equation that the state says, whatever your municipal budget is, the library budget is X. If I wanted to give more money, I could. We don't. We take the bare minimum that the township is obligated to provide that with. Library director, there, there have been increases there, but what you fail to tell everybody is the fact that there used to be a director and there used to be a clerk underneath that person, as well as a QPA and everything else. When the last director left, we did not hire a new person. We promoted somebody up, which is an increase, by the way, because now they're taking on more responsibility. That person's also a QPA, so we don't have to hire a QPA. That person is now doing about three different jobs from within. We never hired an outside director and then put somebody else there, so it's an overall cost savings. Interestingly, you complain about raises, but I don't see you necessarily complaining that the library now has $100,000 to give back to the township. Again, we are cutting costs there. We're keeping costs down, even though the township is obligated to provide more money in the municipal budget to the library. The library's not necessarily using it, and they're certainly not wasting it, so much so that it's actually coming back to the township. That's that. Jersey City pilots, Mr. Dros, I'm totally convinced that you're never going to understand a pilot. You're never going to get to the bottom of how beneficial they are to the taxpayers. As I said earlier in my mayor's report, it costs us maybe a million dollars a year to stand still. If we don't have new revenue, taxpayers foot the bill. We've been cutting a lot of revenue, but we also need revenue. We haven't built anything substantial, probably in 10 or 15 years, substantial. And we need that revenue. It's a fallacy that these developments bring in children. I have gone as far as to actually use Belleville statistics. The last thing Belleville built maybe 20 years ago or 18 years ago, the town Essex Park, the townhouse-type gated community, about 19 kids in the school district, but they pay a heck of a lot more than the, the 19 children times X amount of dollars, which it costs to educate a kid. So, and again, that's a townhouse gated community. You would expect far more children there. These new style apartments that are coming into Belleville are young professionals who are not having children or having less children. And in the seventies, they're one-bedroom apartments, they're studio apartments. These are revenue generators for us. That's an absolute fallacy to bring kids. As a matter of fact, there's a state report out. I'm going to probably have it for a presentation I'm going to make. State report out saying that Belleville is down about 200 students in the last, I believe it's 10 years. I don't know if it's exactly 10, but statistically, we're going down in children, which is absolutely the trend. If you're part of this world, if you're part of this civilization, you do know that people are having less children. And if you know the apartments that we're building, it's just not, not going to happen. We're going to overflow our, our, our children, overflow our schools with children. Budget, Mr. Iacono already talked about, and last but not least, back to your first topic, the online agendas. We do have software. We're still kind of starting, the council's still kind of getting used to it. Once the council is used to it, once the administration's used to it, we can flip that switch and turn it off with the governing body. And I would have to spend a lot less time explaining every single resolution, something I want. You throw a jab in there, as you normally do about a lack of transparency. Mr. Dros, I tell you, and I tell everybody that's looking at me right now, there has never been a more transparent government in the history of Belleville than this one. I promised to livestream every single council meeting since the day I got sworn in, and we did just that. We're on social media now. We were never on social media before. Our agendas, our minutes, everything are, you can go back to any single council meeting you want to watch. It's all archived for anybody to see on our official website. So again, it's just, it's, it's, it's laughable to think that you want to throw a dig at this administration, at this council, saying we're not transparent. Just totally not true. Anybody else? Do we have anybody else that wrote in comments?
No, I do not, Mayor.
Okay, so now we're going to, again, we're going to be consistent. The first time I go to the clerk to see who wrote in answers. Now I do see video faces here, so I'm just going to ask for a hand. Once I can acknowledge you, you're going to have five minutes to comment on anything that you heard here tonight. And if, if it's a question that we can answer, or if it's something that deserves an answer, we're going to get you an answer on that. But really, it's your chance to give public commenting. So I'm going to start with anybody that I see on video. If I see, I see Ms. Fleishman. So again, for the third time, name and address for the record, and then you have five minutes for your public comment.
Okay, Carmella Fleishman, 33 Main Street. Okay, couple of things. Last meeting, I asked about finding out what we can do about the corner of Giralliman and Union about doing either a arrowed light or a delayed green. Wants to know what the progress, progress was on that. That's number one. Number two, we've noticed that on Main Street, there is a food truck now, which is great. Well, businesses, more business for Belleville. That's great. They might run into a problem with them being busy and blocking traffic on the northbound lane? Southbound lane? Sorry, southbound lane. We drove by the other day. He had a line of about four or five cars. They are kind of off to the side because the food truck is parked right near the, give us a gum.
The old, the old.
The old, the old. Feinkelstein property. Sorry. Like I said, I'm, I'm all for more business in Belleville, food trucks, whatever. Like, might become a, a traffic problem. And then what else? I think that was it. I know I have to start writing stuff down, but that's okay. That's it for the time being. Thank you.
So, yes, Giralliman Street and Union, as a matter of fact, my office is right there, my private office. And there was a severe accident there last week. And so I know that that's, that intersection has been flagged by our police department. I know.
Excellent.
Our traffic department, I'm assuming, once they get some more data behind. Uh, once they get some more data behind them, I know the chief is on the call now. Uh, once they get some more data behind them, if there's a need, uh, for a recommendation, if it's our responsibility, we'll move on that. If we need to get the county involved, um, we can always get the county involved. But yeah, there was a bad, bad accident there. I saw it. I was a part of it. Uh, witnessed to it, I should say. And as far as the food truck goes, I, I've actually asked this question to the manager. Uh, I'm not quite sure how much longer. That was a pilot program. Uh, the sender was supposed to be somewhere else. He, he's there. Uh, not quite sure how much longer that's going to go, but if it does go much longer, we, we'll, we'll have our police, uh, traffic department check that out as well.
And just, I'm sorry, one other thing, they just need to, I mean, clean up that area of the trash. The DPW in this town works really, really hard. They work. Oh, that's county. That's right. Sorry. It's County Road. Sorry about that. All right.
I will say, and, and, uh, before I move on, I, I will say that, uh, whereas originally it was a different location, one of the reasons why I think the manager, uh, was, was okay with him going there was the fact that that's a, uh, a, a known dumping spot. And since he's been there, bringing more light and liveliness and traffic to the area, we've seen a lot less illegal dumping in that area, but it's something that I know our DPW and our police are going to be definitely taking a look at.
Great. Thank you very much.
Uh, so I'm still looking at people on video for, uh, hands. I don't see any other hands from, and oh, I got Mr. Mafucci. There you are.
Victor Mafucci, sixty-one Continental Avenue. Uh, just a couple of things. You might have to go to Mr. Cazarelli for this, though. The plants they did down Camp Carragher, first of all, right now they look like candlesticks, but do you know what kind of shrubs they are? Oh, let me.
Yeah, I'll let you finish and I'll go to, I know that there were, there were, there were ones that like, uh, they like water. I know that because they're, they were specifically put there for the, uh, the flooding of the river that goes there, but I, I might be able to get you an exact answer.
Okay, I was just curious. Let me see. Do you know the status of the proposed warehouse down the Finkelstein property? I mean, it was approved quite a while ago.
So there's, there's, uh, I'm, you know what? I'll, I'll, I'll let you finish and then I'll just jump.
There's just, uh, one other. Earlier, when you were talking about, uh, Livingston versus Branch Brook Park, I think the majority of the time you said tests and at the end you said vaccine. You did mean vaccine, correct? And one other thing for everyone, uh, happy holiday and a healthy new year.
Thank you.
That's it.
Uh, I did, I did, I, I did try and cover both topics when I was discussing it, uh, and I may have overlapped it. So the Livingston low, uh, the county is doing testing six days a week. Uh, Bevel can go anywhere. Uh, however, when it comes to the, the vaccine, it's currently available or will be available in Livingston for Bevel residents. But for the vaccine, we are going to try and get that moved to Branch Brook Park's location.
Now, the vaccines we're talking about, they're the twenty-sixth, right?
I'm sorry, get ahead, Steve.
I think Joe D was talking, this would hope, he's hoping to open this up for vaccines after the twenty-sixth, right? Something like that. After Christmas.
When you say open this up, open what?
The vaccines.
Oh, yeah. So the, uh, first responders, I, we're, we're going to a press conference on Friday. First responders are going to get it first, uh, and then yeah, immediately thereafter, as soon as we start getting doses, it's going to be available to us.
And Mayor, I'll jump in real quick. Uh, the, the plants that we got all from a grant, uh, that we wrote through the green team, are red twig dogwoods and they actually are there to help hold the soil and stop the soil from keep eroding into the river. If you see that area, um, it's all washed out. It's gravel. It's, it's not even, uh, soil at this point. It's mostly gravel. So we brought in some soil, plant that, and that's going to help stabilize the, the riverbed over there. So the red twig dogwood.
Nice. Uh, the last, the last question was about the warehouse. So there's potentially two warehouses going down the valley. I'm assuming you're talking about the twenty-four acre Finkelstein or Walter Kitty site. Uh, we, we do discuss that in our weekly, uh, read, I'm sorry, in our monthly redevelopment meeting. Uh, besides saying that it's definitely moving along, uh, I believe we've seen some plans now for the warehouse. I believe that they just might be getting tied up a little bit with environmentals and some due diligence there. Uh, but I believe it's already, the property has already, uh, changed hands, I believe. And they're just sorting out some, uh, environmentals there, but that's, that's a great win for Bevel. Absolutely. It's, um, forty, fifty years of, speaking of ratables, uh, near twenty-four acre site in Bevel. Uh, we got very little money for an empty lot. Uh, and now this, this governing body, this administration, uh, working with, believe it or not, working with area needed rehabilitation at a pilot, uh, we actually attracted a developer. It's going to get, you know, probably a million dollars a year in revenue, uh, for Bevel. Uh, so again, that's a, a plus one for, for a pilot and, and the governing body, uh, using our powers of, uh, not eminent domain, but area needed rehab or area needed redevelopment to actually get that deal done. Um, so hands, I'm looking for hands. Anybody else? Oh.
I'm sorry, there was.
You're muted, you're muted. Hold on, you're muted. Go ahead.
Several days ago, I went down into the camp. Uh, with the construction of the new houses, there were piles of dirt and rocks on both sides, which is now town property, and some of it has spilled into the roadway. So you had to go around them and it's a narrow roadway to start with. Uh, I just wanted to let you know, I don't know if it's been cleaned up yet.
Okay, uh, the manager's probably going to be writing that down to, to look into.
I got that, Mayor. I'll, I'll check with Bobby. Bobby will take a right by tomorrow.
All right, sounds good. Uh, so again, I'm looking for hands for anybody that's on video. I don't see hands for people on video, so we've now covered anybody that emailed in. We've covered anybody on video. So next, uh, we're going to go to anybody that's on audio or on a phone. Uh, I'm going to ask you just to unmute, uh, yourself, uh, and be acknowledged. And then you have obviously five minutes for your public commenting. We have.
Have, uh, I have a couple of questions. Michael Sheldon.
Sure, just name and address for the record again.
Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street.
Sure.
Um, good evening. I just have a couple of comments and questions about what you talked about at the beginning of the meeting about the possibility of, uh, moving township employees from the township's current self-insurance program to the state insurance plan. And you, and Mr. Iakono said that that has the potential of saving upwards of two point eight million dollars, uh, per year. I just want to, um, let it be known that back in September two thousand fifteen, um, Linda Baum, who at that time was an executive member of the New Jersey Foundation for Open Government, and she's a retired, um, insurance industry analyst. She appeared before the governing body and, um, asserted that she had analyzed the town's insurance plans and said that if the town went from self-insurance to third-party insurance or the state plan, uh, that in two thousand fifteen would save over two million dollars. So this is not the first time something like this is being contemplated. I would be all in favor of, um, obviously for the, the cost savings to taxpayers to see this, see this, um, come to reality. But I, um, one concern I have is that it's always been my understanding that the reason why the township is self-insured is that a, the state plan or a third-party insurance plan would only cover full-time employees. And since council members as a technicality are not full-time employees, you're considered, you know, part-timers, you wouldn't be eligible to participate in the state plan. Now, that's my understanding. Maybe I'm wrong about it, but if, if I'm correct about this, if you were to make the pitch to all of the bargaining units, the police, the fire department, the township employees, to make certain concessions in their current insurance for the betterment of the whole community, would the council be willing to give up your insurance coverage if the bargaining units were to go with the state plan? So just something I would like, you, you may not want to talk about that tonight, but certainly this will become an issue next year when you start contract negotiations. But it may be something you may have to seriously consider. The council may have to abandon your insurance in, in order to get that concession, uh, from the, uh, the township employees. The other thing I wanted to comment upon is, um, I'm, I've been waiting with bated breath to finally see an official unveiling of your iCompass system. Uh, one of the earlier commenters, uh, spoke about when iCompass would finally become available. Uh, I know the portals there, um, Ms. Kavanaugh has been, uh, putting agendas on iCompass since September. Uh, in actual, if you hunt around this iCompass portal a bit, you can download the entire agenda packet, which is something council members get, but isn't sent to the general public. But all of the, um, reference PDFs in that system currently, I guess, are, are restricted access unless you have an account or have certain privileges. You can't look at those documents, but you can get to them if you, uh, click on the agenda packet link at the top of that portal page. So I mean, uh, I, 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 my understanding is that over thirty thousand dollars was spent acquiring the iCompass license. Uh, I hope that finally in early two thousand twenty-one, as a belated Christmas gift to the township, you finally fully enable iCompass so that at long last, all of the residents in this town can see the full statements of ordinances, resolutions, bill lists, et cetera, long before a meeting takes place. Most other communities in New Jersey have provided this service to their residents for many, many years. And I've often cited Nutley. Nutley doesn't have iCompass. They just use their own regular website to make all these documents available to their residents prior to commissioner meetings. Time is long overdue to finally provide that same courtesy to Bevel residents. So that's all I have to say tonight. Um, happy holidays to everyone and hopefully a much better twenty twenty-one than twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Happy holidays to you as well. So I, uh, yeah, I'm here now with paper. Um, we're still sorting out the system, uh, as I said to the previous commenter, if we can get, uh, it accessed, uh, by the public, it would make my job a lot easier. I don't have to rifle through, uh, papers to answer the questions because most questions would probably be answered ahead of time because they can see exactly what they're asking. So, uh, I would like to think would be optimistic for twenty twenty-one that we'll get that rolled out to the general public. Um, and then, you know, back to the insurance thing, uh, two point eight million dollars is substantial. Uh, I think you go under a premise, uh, uh, of your own understanding that, uh, township and, uh, uh, council members are part-time. Uh, I can tell you, I don't put part-time hours in. I could tell you that we have an extremely low salary for the amount of time that we put in. Uh, but nowhere does it actually say that we work five hours or six hours or ten hours. Uh, I was on council, I was on meetings all day today. I could assure you. Uh, I don't do this part-time. I could assure you that I'm not, I don't consider myself a part-time employee at all. I do have an extremely low salary. Uh, for those of you who don't know, I make seven thousand dollars a year. Council members make six thousand dollars a year. So while we have very small salaries, uh, it's not, uh, compensative to the amount of time that we put in by any stretch of the imagination. I'd been on meetings all day today, uh, and I have a, a full-time job. So, um, I, I do both things. So it's, uh, it's not, it's not a full-time position to me. So I think that premise might be a little wrong, uh, but two point eight million dollars savings is something that I'm aggressively going towards. Something that this governing body has already shown, uh, an intention to, to go for. Um, anybody else, uh, that's?
Okay. Hey, Ruben Rodriguez, uh, has a question and Ruben needs to unmute his phone.
All right, Ruben, you are up. Uh, you got five minutes of commenting. I just need your name and address for the record.
Ruben, one seventy-nine Cedar Hill Avenue in Belleville. Obviously. Um, uh, Councilman Cazarelli, if that was you behind the dog park, my dog is over here thanking you because I don't have to drive to Nutley. I'm super excited. I'm super excited about the, uh, uh, fairway, the basketball court. That's awesome. Thank you. Um, I did have something, it sounds funny about the food truck park. It seems irrelevant. Everybody's complaining about whatever, but if we could get more food trucks in that food truck park instead of just having the one, maybe a different one every day, because I know if I was coming off the parkway and it was like, today is Cuban food, today is grilled cheese, whatever, I would make that left turn and, you know, instead of making the right on Hoover, uh, off Hoover or whatever it is. But, um, and another thing that I'm going to put out here as a coach and as a parent in the Belleville rec that might be a moneymaker and it, you know, for any of you, it might be not popular to put out there. But I think it's the time that we've come that we can start charging, even if it's a minimal registration fee. It could be a big help to, to Belleville Recreation. Even if it's five dollars per registration or ten dollars per year and you could register for anything, it, it would be a big help to register. I know, I know our free recreation is awesome and what the recreation department does is awesome. But that could turn out to be a lot of money that could help, uh, the Belleville rec and, uh, it, it won't impact, you know, families as much as we think it will. So other than that, Merry Christmas and again, thank you for everything you're doing. And you guys are doing a great job. So, uh, besides that, think about that five dollars, uh, support. All right?
Got it. Thank you. So, uh, Merry Christmas to you as well. So yeah, uh, again, it, I'm preparing a, a report now. Uh, this, this governing body, you know, with this administration executing, uh, our investments into, uh, parks and public places. And it's been unprecedented. Uh, it's something that we promised to, to provide better services. I always said Bevel's residents pay high taxes. We can't necessarily reduce your taxes drastically, but we can start to give you, uh, facilities and services that are proportional. And I think we're, we're on our way to doing that with dog parks and, and the, and the new, and the new parks and, and, and all that stuff. Um, the food truck, that was the concept. We were going to have maybe three or four food trucks in there. They are on a route, so it would have to be something more consistent. Uh, but that was a pilot project and, and, uh, I know, uh, some council members had some reservations about that. And we said, hey, it's a pilot project and it's almost over. And then the council's going to reevaluate that and see where we land with that. But I love the concept of food trucks. Um, I do think there's a home for them somewhere in Bevel and I think that we're going to make a, a second go at that, at, uh, hopefully. Uh, rec fees is a, is a sticky subject. Uh, and members of the council are split. We've debated this and debated this. Right now is probably not the right, right now is probably the best time to do it because we have, uh, revenue shortfall. But with COVID and what increased water rates and with everything else that we're going for, uh, I'm not quite sure today's the time to do it. Uh, we probably will look at it for the twenty twenty-one budget and you will see the council debate that, uh, which is healthy, I think. Um, I'm kind of in line with you, a smaller fee and nominal fee, maybe a T-shirt fee. Um, uh, I think at times I've been outspoken at this. I think we're more interested in providing free rec than, than the best possible rec that we could provide. Uh, and the one caveat, and I think we were all in agreement with this, if it does go to some kind of a fee, whether it's a per sport fee or just a per T-shirt fee, uh, that that money will get kept in recreation and reinvested back in it. It's not going to be a money grab for us for the budget. Uh, we're going to fund the recreation, uh, more so with that revenue that comes in. I think that was something that we all agreed on, but you'll probably see more debate on that, uh, early next year, I would think. Uh, so anybody else, uh, that's currently, I can't see, because I think we got all the hands already that were up. Uh, so if you're here and you still want to participate in public comment, then I'm going to ask you just to mute, uh, unmute your phone and, uh, identify yourself so you can be called on.
Good evening.
Yes.
Hello, uh, Merry Christmas and soon it'll be Happy New Years. My name is Gustavo Soriano, uh, address thirty-three Wachung Avenue, Bevel. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, kudos. Uh, my question is, uh, I was there a couple of weeks ago about the possible angle parking because, uh, my block is very congested for parking. And if that was a possibility, if that was being looked into?
Okay, is, is that, is that the totality of your comments or questions?
Correct, sir.
Uh, so yeah, I do remember that conversation. I do remember the chief was, was there. I do remember him taking notes. I'm not quite sure the status of, uh, wh- whether our traffic department has already investigated that and had a report. Uh, chief, if you're here and you're accessible, uh, if you want to chime in, please do so. If not, uh, you can just get us an answer and we can definitely provide it to, uh, Gustavo maybe tomorrow.
Yes, I was not there, but I happen to know Gustavo and he did relay it to me and, uh,
The same day that you got your haircut, chief, from what I remember.
Yeah, I, I was not at the meeting. I, I had something to do. That's when I got a haircut, in case anyone needs to know. Uh, but yeah.
Shameless plugs. Thank you.
Um, yes, we are, uh, in the process of, of looking into that and we would go back to the, to you, Mayor and the council and what I recommend.
Just give, just give us a little bit of time, Gustavo.
Kudos. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate all that you do. Thank you very much for your time, effort and energy. Have a great evening.
All right. So, uh, still no hands. So again, I'm going to ask if you're on audio or on your phone, just to unmute yourself, identify yourself and, uh, we will call upon you. Uh, I'm going to just give everybody an extra second or so. Normally we, we quit this right away and get out of public commenting to uh, adjourn the meeting, but I'm not seeing anybody else. I'm not seeing any other attempts. Um, so without further ado.
Motion to close public?
Read my mind. We have a motion and a second to close public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm assuming there's no news on that. Uh, so that ends the public commenting portion of our meeting. Next item on the agenda is going to be they're just asking everybody to keep their phones muted, consent agenda. It moved on me. I do have to take off the.
You gotta take six, right?
Is it six? Yes, it's six. I'm just going to take off number six. Does any other council member have anything else to pull off?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I want to just pull eight and, uh, 24, just make a quick comment on each of those.
Eight, four, I'm going to add in 23 on that. And that's it. Okay. So Madam Clerk, if you didn't get that, it is going to be item number six. Item number eight, item 23 and 24. And that's it. So I need a motion to move the consent agenda, all those items with those exceptions that I just listed.
So moved.
Second it.
With a motion made in second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Wait a minute. I made a mistake.
It's consent agenda.
No, we're.
Counsel one.
It's the consent agenda. It's, it's all, all the items.
Okay.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm now taking off, uh, item number six for just an individual roll call from my.
You need a motion for six?
Yes. I heard the motion and the second for item number six. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke? Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Uh, abstain. Uh, item number eight.
Need a motion for eight? We'll move in eight.
Moving eight.
Uh, I'm going to second it. I just want to make a quick comment. Um, this is to appoint, uh, Gustavo Soriano, who we just heard talk actually a couple of minutes ago. Uh, he's a 20-year business owner here in Bellevue. He's a new landlord and he stepped up to the challenge when we put it out last meeting. If anyone, uh, would like to represent the township on the rent leveling board. And, uh, he said he would definitely do it and he's happy to, uh, take the position and I'm excited to have him involved in our government. So I just want to give him a quick shout out. I, I see he's still on there. Uh, so I want to give him a shout out and I want to thank him for his, uh, volunteering for this.
Great.
And he's a taxpayer. He's a homeowner.
And he's a good barber, right, chief?
All right, let's do a roll.
You'll be the judge of that. You see me every day.
So, uh, we do a roll call for, I, we already had a motion in a second, so just do a roll call.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke? Schumalo Burke?
Um, no, I'm seven.
No way.
We, we never.
Already voted on number seven.
Run eight. This is eight, Murray.
Say that again. I, I couldn't hear.
It's resolution number eight.
Oh, okay.
Yes or no?
No.
Mayor Melham?
I'm a yes on number eight.
Vinny, are you going to move 24?
No, I had 23 first.
I got 23 first.
Okay.
Just, just a motion. A motion and a second for 23?
Yeah.
Move it.
Second it.
We had a motion made in second for number 23, just along the same lines. Uh, Mike is from Mike's, uh, service center, which is right there on Union Avenue by my office. Been in business for 25 years. Uh, someone reached out and just wanted us to, uh, honor his dad for serving the community for 25 years. Good business owner. Uh, been here for 25 years and, uh, just want to congratulate him for, uh, 25 years, uh, calling Bellevue his home for his business.
Cool.
That's it. We just do a roll call.
Great. Congrats.
Congrats.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke? Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next item is item number 24.
Vin, you want to move that or you want me to?
Yeah, I'll make, uh, I'll make a motion, uh, for that. Um, I just wanted to just say, uh, I didn't know you know her too, Steve.
Yeah, I was, I was on, I was on Second River, you know, 15 years ago.
Okay, yeah, Pat was, um, Pat was, uh, such a good secretary. She's been it for over 40 years. She's been the secretary of the committee that represents, uh, Bellevue, Bloomfield, Newark, East Orange, Orange, Montclair and Glen Ridge. And, uh, she served as that secretary for 40 years. It was her life. She loved it. Um, and, uh, she will be missed. So I just want to honor her with this resolution.
I agree, Vin. Good lady.
Yeah.
Say yeah.
All right. We have a motion, uh, motion in a second. We just need a, a roll call now.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Schumalo Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Our agenda is new business. Hearing none, seeing none?
I, I just had a quick thing, Mike.
Yep.
So, um, last week was a tough week for Bellevue. Uh, former, uh, president of Unico, Gene Antonio passed away. Another former longtime resident, Enzo Antolini passed away. And I would just, I would just ask for prayers for those people and their families. Um, and I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be careful in the snow as well as in this other COVID nightmare. So.
Thank you.
I'm good.
All righty. Not hearing anybody else. I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.